Call the meeting to order. Roll call please.
Councilmember Ron Perono.
Here.
Councilmember Mendoza.
Here.
Mayor Protem Obesal Martinez.
Here.
And Mayor Tucker.
Here. Um, please stand for the pledge of allegiance. All right, adjustments to the agenda?
Mr. Mayor, there are no adjustments to the agenda.
All right, thank you. Um, city attorney reports on closed session.
Thank you, the council went to closed session and discussed two items of anticipated litigation. Under government code five four nine five six point nine D two. Direction was given to council on both items, no additional report. The council also discussed conference with labor negotiators. Related to the uh rep, the groups listed on the agenda, direction was given to the negotiator. That concludes my report.
All right, thank you. Um, public comments. If you wish to address the city council concerning any item within the city council's jurisdiction. Please raise your hand and be acknowledged by the mayor. At this time, state your name and address for the record. The mayor reserves the right to place a time limit of three minutes on each person's presentations. Um, do we have any written in?
No comments via email.
Okay, um, anybody, any comments? State your name and address, please.
Mayor, council, staff. My name is Daniel Schleyer, I'm with the Imperial Police Officers Association. And this Friday, uh, for the first time. We participate in the summer bash with our association. And we will have um hot dogs uh for the public for free, so we're gonna grill those. And we do have a dunk tank uh to dunk. A car, you know? Uh, who doesn't, right? But I also wanna invite you, uh, council and um to partake. And if you wanna be dunked, let me know.
All right.
Water, there's a lot of room.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, look forward to it.
Okay. Next up is A one. Presentations, recognition for outgoing planning commission board members Rebecca Taraza Baxter. All right. On behalf of the city of Imperial, we pre, we will present you with this plaque. To thank you for your dedicated service and contrib- contributions, it says. All ready? We presented to Rebecca Taraza Baxter in recognition of your service and planning commission twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-five.
Sorry. It all looks so nice though.
Thank you, Beck.
Thank you Becky for all your hard work and dedication to the city.
And you have any comment?
Yeah. While you're getting that Becky, let me say thank you so much for the, the time you've dedicated to the city of Imperial. And in addition to that, congratulations on your new role with the city of Raleigh.
Oh yeah, congratulations.
Thank you, thank you very much. No, I just wanna thank you guys for allowing me the opportunity to serve. Uh, for the city of Imperial on the planning commission for those uh two, two and a half years. It was really a fulfilling experience. It was a wonderful learning experience, also I think it really helped to um help me get to where I am as well. Uh, currently in terms of um making sure it's kind of a little bit of a training. Right there as well with all the things I was able to learn here on the commission. So um, I think you guys have a wonderful individual that you will be voting on. Uh, later today, and so I think that's wonderful uh for Vidi. And for the city of Imperial as well, she's a very dedicated uh resident of Imperial. And also she's very well informed and very civically engaged, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the, the board?
No, she knows, I'm very thankful for her service. And I'm very excited, she's the city manager, so Dennis, you get to mess with Becky now over there.
Are there any other planning commissioners here that would like to say something?
I, I would brief, I, I sit with the planning commission, so we are, you will be missed. It was amazing as the attorney with planning commission. She read every single thing and had a ton of feedback, which was always really good for the city, so it was greatly appreciated.
All right, thank you and thank you. All right, next is A two. Imperial Police Department Cadet Program presentation by Officer Carmen Fiero.
Good, good evening, city council members and community members. My name is Officer Fiero. And I have the honor of serving as a cadet advisor for the Imperial PD Cadet Program. I'm proud to stand before you tonight alongside my dedicated colleagues who help run this program. As well as the amazing young men and women of our police cadet program. Who are standing right beside me. Tonight, we are here to celebrate the successful graduation of our cadets from the Summer Police Cadet Academy. This program is more than just a summer activity. It's a life shaping experience. Designed to teach responsibility, leadership, teamwork and community service. In the weeks leading up to the academy. These young cadets committed themselves to physical training, discipline and preparation. They attended pre-academy meetings, practiced drill formations, learned basic codes and procedures. And most importantly, developed a mindset of teamwork and respect. Both for one another and for the community they are committed to serve. During the academy itself, they were challenged every day. Mentally, physically and emotionally. They participated in physical conditioning, learned about police procedures, traffic stops, radio codes. First aid and how to respond under pressure. They also met officers from various units such as Canine, SWAT and Investigations. Who gave them a firsthand look at the different aspects of law enforcement. This experience wasn't just about becoming better cadets. It was about becoming better leaders and citizens. Every one of these individuals showed perseverance, maturity and pride in wearing that uniform. Our goal is to build a bridge between our youth and law enforcement. To give them a sense of purpose, confidence and a deeper understanding of what it means to serve. To our city council, thank you for your ongoing support. Your recognition tonight means a lot to these cadets. And motivates us to continue growing the program year after year. And to our cadets, congratulations. You earned this, you showed up, gave your best and represented our city with honor and integrity. We are proud of you. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm gonna have a couple of cadets come up here and share their experience. Cadet Ramirez, if you would please step out.
Good afternoon, everybody. How are we doing?
Great, thank you.
That's nice to hear. I am Cadet Ramirez. I like to talk about my experience in the academy. Um, as explained, it was very challenging, not physically but also mentally as well. Having to switch plays, also focus on teamwork and not only just alone, but with everyone. During my experience, I have lost a member. And it was very challenging. But I managed to move on. Because unfortunately, that was how the program ran. I'd like to thank my teammates for being there for me. And to show their support, not only in themselves, but also for everyone around them. Thank you for letting me talk about my moments in the academy.
I'll have Cadet Salgado step up.
Good evening, I'm Cadet Salgado and I was one of the few of the, this year's cadets that want to phase two of the Explorers Academy. And I will say, the academy and the program itself are. Demanding in certain ways, but with every day we grow. Much stronger to prevail past those obstacles.
Sorry.
It's okay. Don't worry about that, keep on going.
The program itself helps us build a sense of character and responsibility and I myself have found that. I am a better person for it. Um, I did have a presentation ready, but I've lost it. Bit upsetting. I don't need a piece of paper to iterate how grateful I am that this program exists though. It's wonderful and I'm very impressed that it's still holding up for. Well, at all. To be honest, I never really expected a program like this to exist. Very happy for it. I'm very proud of my fellow cadets and proud of myself for how far I've come. Phase two of the academy isn't far different from phase one and can't wait to go to phase three next year. But phase two often more focuses on teamwork and. Balance among your fellow peers and understanding the safety of one another. I'm very excited for phase three and I really appreciate having the pleasure to be presented with my city's council.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We have one more, Cadet Bustamante.
Good evening, everybody, how's everyone doing?
Good evening, good, thank you.
Alright, so as my fellow cadets have said. Uh, the academy isn't something that's very simple, it's a challenging. Challenging not only physically but mentally and emotionally. And I am one of the lucky few, well, may not lucky, but that passed the academy phase one and two. So phase two is more teamwork, as my fellow colleague has said, more teamwork, more if you. How do I put this? If you don't. If you. If you don't work as a team, you won't succeed, basically, that's what I'm trying to say. Everyone needs to work together in order to pass the academy, isn't just one thing. Even in exercises or learning inside a classroom, which we did a lot of. As well as physical activities, right? Second phase also does a lot of hands-on activities. Such as I'll mention ones such as traffic stops, uh, learning how to. Yeah, learning how to, like, getting a suspect under your control, basically, that's what I'm trying to get at. And also experiencing chemical agents, which were, should say it wasn't too fun. It wasn't too fun, right? We experienced OC and CS gas, basically OC is mace or pepper spray in the form of pepper balls. So we would go into the gas house about, we did it six times, so we did three and three if I'm correct. So we went three times in OC and then we did CS gas, which is tear gas. Which both make your skin irritated, your eyes start to water, everything basically just burnt. My bad, so everything just basically burns and in CS gas, your lungs feel like you can't breathe, but you can't. It's a very weird. Experience, if I should say. So, thank you very much, everybody, for hearing me out.
Cadet, if I could ask, what is it you eh expect to experience in phase three, what is phase three in?
Phase three, okay, so I'm glad you asked that, so phase three is also a lot of hands-on experience, but it's also takes on a lot of leadership roles. So we take everything from phase one and phase two, we combine those and go into phase three and we learn more. About one of the things is active shooters. So. Uh, the cadets get to basically go into a active shooter scenario where we. Try and basically get the active shooter to surrender themselves or to, so they could get arrested, right? And, and. What else? Well, that's really the main part about phase three, but another thing would also be. It's not so much exercise, right, that they make you to do. But if you do one small thing wrong, you're going to pay for it, basically. Yeah, that's pretty much phase three. Any more questions?
So how many has completed, everybody obviously, phase one, but phase two, show of hands, one and two. That's a lot of you guys, awesome, congratulations to all of you.
Yeah, congratulations. We uh definitely appreciate you guys being here and, you know, seeing this program grow. You know, to where, I know, I think when we first started, I think there was only two or something like that and to see these numbers right now is just amazing. Um, I know also we had heard that there was a, somebody that took some award at the academy.
She's not here. She planned for thirty-eight minutes.
Whoa.
Wow.
She did really good, she impressed everyone, not just us. We know what she's capable of, we know what all these kids are capable of. Uh, but uh she impressed a lot of people in the academy.
Yeah, we're very proud of you guys, appreciate all your hard work, service and dedication to the city, thank you very much for everything.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
And I just have a small video of the academy. Thank you for your time.
How long was the academy?
Um, it was six days.
So how many?
Six days.
Were you getting yelled at the whole entire time?
Yes.
Oh.
Yes, they were. The mama bear inside me. I felt bad for these kids. Sometimes I just wanted to tell them to stop, but they did good.
Good.
Awesome.
Also see they got to have a little bit of fun, right?
Yeah, um, so um, the final day, well, actually the night before graduation, uh, they have a little dance for them. Uh, the cadets get a chance to socialize with their other peers in a different way, rather than it, than it just being all strictly class and training. They get to uh actually uh have fun with each other, so they put a dance together for them and we're lucky to be a, be a part of it.
It's amazing.
Any other questions?
Thank you guys very much.
Thank you guys for your time, appreciate.
We can?
Yeah. Sorry. Hey, excuse me, wait, wait. Um, Ken, yes. You guys are part of this. There we go.
Ready?
Let's do it.
Okay, next up, A three. Imperial Valley Transit Ride Modification. Present, presentation by ICTC Executive Director, Mr. David Aguirre.
Good evening, honorable members of the council and members of the public. Uh, my name is David Aguirre, I'm the Executive Director of the Imperial County Transportation Commission. Uh, thank you for the opportunity to share some um exciting information about topics that we've been working on for quite some time now. We have prepared a brief presentation to kind of highlight some of the uh proposed changes that we're considering for our I T ride service. So I prepared a, a brief agenda to kind of keep us on track as it pertains to the uh presentation. So what is I T ride?
It's just not up yet.
No. Do I need to do anything? I'm sort of tech savvy.
There it is.
I'll go back to the beginning, just so you can kind of see uh what the.
I'll go back to the beginning, just so you can kind of see, uh, what the vehicles will look like, um, in the near future. And so we've, um, included some brand new branding, uh, to the service. They are still yellow and, and black and white, but we've changed the branding a little bit to kind of, um, coincide with the modifications that we're considering for the service. So there's the agenda. Um, so again, what is IVT ride? IVT ride is a inner-city, uh, dialer ride service that is available in various communities. What we plan to implement some adjustments to increase the effectiveness of the service. So IVT ride is exclusively available to seniors fifty-five years of age or older or persons with disabilities. The service, um, as it is now, experiences low usage due to its limited approved use. So one of the objectives, uh, by virtue of modifying the service is to ex- expand the usage uh, for the general public, uh, for the bene- for the benefit of the communities it currently serves. Um, the service currently exclusively employs manual scheduling, utilizing minimal assistance from a scheduling software. So again, part of the, one of the modifications that we're proposing is to include, um, advanced technology to enhance the operational efficiency of the, of the service, um, and increase availability. Also, inefficiencies and low ridership have restricted the ability to enhance services and meet, uh, fair box recovery requirements. For this, uh, particular item, the objective is to increase ridership, uh, broaden service availability to the public and provide effective and efficient services, um, for the residents of Imperial, El Centro and Heber. As part of the, the adjustments to the service, again, we've, um, elected to rebrand the service uh, to make it a new service to the folks that have never used the service, but also kind of incorporate some of the elements of what it was, so that the folks that currently use the service still recognize the service and know that it's still available to them. So just to give you a comparison of the proposed changes, um, under its existing conditions, the, the service is currently available in the following areas, so, um, El Centro, Heber Imperial as a giant service zone, uh, Brawley, Callexico and the West Shores area. Each of the areas that it currently serves, um, have different hours depending on the city. So it is a little bit difficult for us to manage, um, based on the different hours that it's available. And then, of course, we have a dispatching team that schedules all of the trips for the public. Um, an example being in El Centro, the service is available Monday through Friday, seven AM to six PM versus Callexico, it's seven to five PM, uh, Monday through Friday. Uh, weekend hours also vary based on the service. Um, so we're, we're trying to, uh, make an effort to consolidate the service, to make it easier to navigate for anyone that's using the service, let's say in Imperial, but you can also use the service in Callexico under the same, um, hourly structure. Currently, each city has a different fare structure, varying from about a dollar to three dollars per trip. Um, all trips are scheduled via phone with the, with our dispatch center, which is also our customer service center. Uh, we only accept cash and in-person payment, um, and it's only available for seniors and persons with disabilities. Um, our proposed changes include to open the service to the general public, so the seniors would still be able to utilize the service, uh, but it would also, uh, open and expand to accept anyone else that wants to utilize the service. All the service areas, we, we have kept all of the service areas, but we'll, they will all have the same hours that they would operate. So Monday through Friday, six AM to six PM, uh, Saturdays and Sundays, seven AM to two PM. Um, we're going to integrate a mobile application that will help, uh, push, uh, ridership and push, um, advancing availability for the service. Um, so it'll increase, uh, trip booking opportunities, um, for anyone that wants to potentially use the service. Uh, we're going to unify the fare structure for all the service areas, so two dollars for the general public per trip and one dollar for seniors and persons with disabilities. Uh, the service will be open to the general public, as noted, it was not available to the general public before. Um, you can, seniors can still schedule their trips via our dispatch center. Um, and then they could also use the application if they, if they'd like to do that as well. The, the dispatch center hours remain the same, so they're currently open from Monday through Friday from five forty-five AM to seven PM. Um, Saturday, six to six PM and Sunday, seven to five PM. The, the same, uh, phone number that exists right now for customer service still, will still continue to exist, so you can still make that same phone call. And all of our, well, the, the mobile application will actually accept electronic fare payments. So when you book your trip, similar to, let's say, like an Uber setup, um, you book your trip, where you want to go, you essentially pay for your trip if you use the mobile application, but you can also elect to pay cash when the vehicle picks you up. Um, so you have both options that are available to you. For the senior population, you can make, uh, advance reservations up to two weeks in advance. So that is exclusive to the senior population, uh, versus the general public would only be, will only have access to the mobile application. All of our vehicles are, um, equipped with ADA infrastructure, so they, um, have a, generally, they have, uh, wheelchair lifts to be able to accommodate, uh, folks with disabilities. Uh, some of our vehicles have, uh, wheelchair ramps, but most of them have wheelchair lifts. Um, and they all have cameras, uh, so it's a safe and secure environment for the public if they, you know, wanted to utilize the service. Just some, uh, diagrams of where our service cur- areas, uh, will be. Uh, so Callexico essentially covers the entire city of Callexico. Again, they are intra-city, so they're, uh, for the most part, don't leave the city. Um, Brawley, um, is pretty much the same service area that existed before. However, we've expanded it a little bit to cover the SDSU external campus, because, um, as it stands now, there is no, uh, transit service that goes to the SDSU external campus, so this allows us to do that. Um, the El Centro, Heber, Imperial area is one giant corridor, so you can move within that entire area. If you live in Heber, you can move to Imperial. If you live in Imperial, you can move to Heber and vice versa, so. The West Shores area, um, exclusively stays in the West Shores community, so that's the Desert Shores, West Shores area. We do have a, a deviation on one of the days of the week that allows it to move from either Brawley or to the Coachella Valley to take, uh, passengers to resources that may not be available in the West Shores area.
David, if I could ask, you talked about it being expanded in the Brawley area out to SDSU. Is there any plans to potentially expanding the, the Imperial area out to IVC?
Yes, but we do have, um, a lot of our fixed route services touch IVC. That's essentially why we didn't necessarily expand it initially, um, as it pertains to this, this service, because you have so many different opportunities to get to IVC with all of our other services. With Brawley and SDSU external campus, there is no service that actually touches it. So this was our opportunity to make sure that we provide something in that area to allow students to be able to get from Brawley to the campus, or they can use our fixed route service to get to Brawley, let's say if they live in Callexico, to get to Brawley and then use this service to get to the campus.
Okay, so the same in Imperial, so if somebody in Imperial has a disability, they can use the ride to get from their residence to a a normal route to IVC.
Exactly. They can get, they can use ride to get to the, the transfer center in Imperial and then they can get to IVC. Or if they have a disability and they're approved with our access service, which is a sister service to this one, they, they can actually just go directly to IVC using that service. And that service is, is a, it's a service that is complimentary to our fixed route service that operates in, along the same routes, but you have to have a disability that prohibits you from using the fixed route service. So that, that's also an opportunity to, to use to get to IVC. Um, this is a picture of what the app will look like. It'll be, um, available, um, within your Google Play or Apple stores. Um, we will have thirty-minute windows for the service, at least to start. So if you're looking for a trip, it'll give you a thirty-minute window to, to either select that you want that trip. It'll give you timeframes that are available and you can select that you want it or you don't, or, you know, try to book it a little bit later. Um, it, it looks very similar to what like an Uber setup is. Um, obviously, it's not Uber, but it looks very similar to that. It'll give you, um, locations, um, you know, uh, popular destinations that you can possibly select as well, so those are predetermined. You don't have to use them, but they're there. Um, and then there's, uh, specific locations that we've highlighted where, uh, maybe they're a little tougher to navigate that, um, you can select and it'll get you to those specific areas as well.
With this application, if you're going to be opening it up to a larger audience of being able to use this, if, if it does pick up ridership, is there going to be any preference given to seniors and the disability as far as openings of being able to?
Yeah, so, so to ensure that seniors still have that priority, seniors are the only population that can pre- pre-book their trips.
Okay.
So, again, if a senior has a reoccurring trip to Walmart, to give you an example, they can pre-book that in advance and so they would be on the, um, on the manifest to be picked up before anyone else gets picked up. And then all of the application pickups would essentially to kind of take place in between or before or after or, you know, on the pathway to that location. So there, the senior population would have the priority, if you will, to, to schedule trips in advance.
Is the app in English and Spanish?
Yes. Yeah, everything we produce is in English and Spanish. Uh, so next steps, um, is to continue to do, uh, presentations to impacted areas. So we've, we've, uh, previously done, uh, presentations to the councils of the city of, uh, Callexico, El Centro. We, uh, did a presentation for the Board of Supervisors, um, and the cities of Brawley. We are also doing outreach to a lot of the senior organizations that utilize the service now, uh, so Allegria in Callexico, AAA nutrition sites, uh, day out centers, senior housing complexes. Um, we're going to continue to do that forever, essentially. I think the, the critical period is as we kick off the service, um, and then probably the couple of months after to engage the public and engage the seniors in terms of how to use the service. But we, we generally do a lot of outreach as it is, so we're going to continue to do that. Uh, we did conduct a public hearing to obtain feedback from the public about the proposed change. So we did that, uh, right before our board meeting in July. Um, we received a couple of comments, but, uh, most of them were, uh, resolved as a result of, you know, just discussion over what the application is going to provide. Um, and then we are planning to begin operating under the new general public service umbrella, uh, starting September second, uh, twenty twenty-five. Uh, we're working on essentially crossing our Ts and dotting our Is as pertains to the application, marketing materials, all of that stuff. So, um, we're, we're making good, uh, progress on the development of all of those items. Uh, we, we will be ready by September second to deliver the service. So, uh, we also have another, uh, planned component that we're going to, um, roll out at the end. We won't tell folks yet, but, um, we're, we're anticipating kind of distributing that or letting the public know of what that little secondary item that we're going to include in the service as well. Um, and then, again, we're going to continue to do outreach and engage the public on the service, um, especially, um, the, the general public as well, because the service doesn't exist for them. Uh, we have a micro transit service in Callexico that exists now that operates very similar to this. It uses the same application. Um, it's very popular in Callexico. Um, this was an opportunity to, for us to, um, amend an existing service that was, um, underperforming and be able to deliver a service that most of the other communities have asked for, while also being able to continue to provide the service that we've provided before. So it kind of killed two birds with one stone, if you will. Um, so we're very excited, um, about what this, uh, could be. Um, we're very excited at the opportunity to be able to, um, deliver this service. It, it's been, uh, a work in progress for some time now. Um, so we're, we're very close to the finish line. So, again, we're, we're very excited about that. Um, and that concludes my presentation. We, we greatly appreciate the partnership and the continued collaboration on behalf of the city. We know this is a service that you guys have asked for before. Um, this is our opportunity to be able to deliver that and deliver that service to the, to the residents of the city of Imperial. Also like to thank the board for continuing to support us in all of our endeavors and pushing us to kind of come up with new and exciting things to, you know, implement into our transit service to make sure that it, um, uh, does what we're supposed to do and that's ultimately serve the public, so, thank you.
Thank you. Any quick more question?
This is just for me. If you have, do you have like a infographic little one pager of the services? Like if I needed to hand it out to my Callexico patients, does that need to come this way?
Yeah. Yeah, we're going, we have a, a lot of, uh, marketing materials that we're developing. We have pamphlets that we're developing. It'll have a website. Um, it'll be available on the app stores. We're going to put QR codes on all of the vehicles so you can tie into the website. So we're, we're developing a ton of information that we're going to push out to. Um, I think we should be ready to go on the website by, I think, next week. We're probably going to make it live around that timeframe as well, so, um, it'll, you know, we'll be sure to share that, all that information as soon as it's, uh, available.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
David, one, one question, and I can't remember the answer to that.
Yes.
That says in Callexico, that's an on-demand, right?
Yes.
It's, are we going to, they're just that one?
Yeah.
Are the other, are the other cities going to get that too or not yet?
Um, so initially, we're going to roll out the, the smaller scale buses, because they have a lot of the ADA infrastructure tied to them. That Callexico service, those vehicles don't have that ADA infrastructure, but they tie into this service. So if there's ever someone that needs a trip and, you know, they, they have a disability and they need a, a vehicle specialized to serve them, we, we tie into this one. So this essentially has all of those vehicles equipped to it. We are working on equipping smaller vehicles that have ADA infrastructure. Those are a little bit more cumbersome to get, but we are working on getting some smaller vehicles like that.
Thank you.
Electric is the other phase, which will be in a future phase, but.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next up is B1, Planning Commission Appointment by Mayor Pro Tim Ida Obeso Martinez.
Hi. So as Becky is leaving us to other pastures over there, um, I would like to invite my appointee, and I always get your name and I say it terribly, Viridiana. I say it wrong, um, up, if you, um, would join us, I'd like to introduce you and have you talk a little bit about yourself as well, please.
I'm honest, I can't, Viridiana.
I can't. Good afternoon, everyone. As Ida mentioned, my name is Viridiana Rosales Trujillo. I've had the pleasure of calling Imperial home for the last seventeen years and the privilege of raising my family here in this great city. I currently serve the Imperial County as their manager for the Small Business Development Center. For the last two and a half years, um, I hold a master's in public administration with the concentration in leadership and graduate certificates in urban management and urban development. I am very thankful for this opportunity, for the invitation and the opportunity and privilege to serve the city in this capacity. I didn't think that I would have a chance to put what I've learned into practice, so I'm really honored and excited about the opportunity that this brings to continue to grow and, um, to contribute in any way that I can to the vision of prosperity and, and development that the great city of Imperial has.
Welcome.
Welcome.
If I may, I would also like to acknowledge, uh, and thank everyone that's here to support me. Thank you, everyone that showed up to show your support. It's truly appreciated and, um, I wouldn't do what I get to do without your support, so thank you so much.
All right, and a photo, please.
I want one with Becky.
Yeah. Oh, you and she, yeah.
Want to do it with all three of you?
Viridiana, you need to stay up here, because you have an oath to take.
Yeah.
Do you want to follow along or you're good? If you want to just face me and. Okay, so raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name. Do solemnly affirm.
Okay, so raise your right hand and repeat after me, I state your name, do solemnly affirm. That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
And that I will bear truth, faith and allegiance.
That I will bear truth, faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
Without any mental reservation.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge.
That I will well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon I am about to enter.
Thank you once again, I'm excited for the opportunity and um here to learn, thank you so much.
Next up is C Consent Agenda. All items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the City Council with one motion. Without discussion, should any council member or other person's request that any item be considered separately. That item will then be taken up at the time as determined by the mayor. I got a motion and a second vote, please.
Abstaining because I'm on the warrants. Motion carries three zero with one abstain from Obeso Martinez.
Okay. And then we'll move on. D Action Item Discussion Action. D one, Adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five dash forty-six. Approving the purchase of a twenty twenty-four Pierce Enforcer Fire Engine.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, um, this is a resolution, it's part of the process to obtaining a new city, um. Fire engine for the city. Uh, we're gonna purchase that, um, this is the first requirement for the financing uh part as well. Uh, if everything goes uh. As expected, uh, we should be probably receiving it uh by December, January. Uh, we're getting one that's already built, uh, they're saving us for us once this goes, if it's approved. Instead of doing the three-year wait that was initially um expected by and and reported by Chief Lancer. So hopefully, um, if approved, uh, we can continue with the financing side. So I'll stand for any questions you may have.
How did this come about so quickly? I mean, at the last meeting, we talked about it and this meeting, we're on the agenda to approve it.
Well, I.
Budgeted already in, or is this the plan or?
Yes, so the the need has been discussed for some. Period of time. Um, and uh, uh, the the opportunity for this particular engine is had came up. And so that's why we're we're uh moving. I guess, depending on where you sit, it might, it might seem fast or not so fast. Uh, given the condition of our of our engines, uh, but uh, um. Uh, and it, I I think as Mr. Manrique has indicated, given the uh availability. Is what drove us to it, because otherwise, the uh, the lead time is three years.
Mister City Manager, if you'd like, I can sh- shed a little light into the what the fire service is looking at today. So unfortunately, the fire service is under the gun um by a takeover of equity firms that are actually purchasing the manufacturers of fire trucks. Consolidating and making a monopoly on over the fire truck industry. Uh, this is pushing the fire trucks to being delayed three years, up to four years sometimes for delivery. Uh, the fire trucks aren't normally found in a lot like we normally buy our our personal vehicles. In this case, uh, this fire truck came up um uh for delivery in December. Uh, at the latest, at the end of of January. And it's a, basically what this vehicle is, is a non-custom, normally uh fire trucks are built uh to order. In this case, uh, we're purchasing a fire truck that is uh meets all the National Fire Protection Association requirements for a fire truck. Um, however, we don't get to call where they put a specific button, for example, on the fire truck. So we don't get to call the details as to how the fire truck is built, but it's built to a standard. And because of lack of uh availability, uh, this was a good purchase for the city of Imperial. Uh, based on the availability of the vehicle itself and your ability to actually move forward with the purchase.
I was gonna say, was anything, are we giving up anything by doing something so quickly? Are we, is there anything that you had would have wanted in the a fire truck that now you're not gonna be able to have by going in so quickly?
If you ask firemen, they want a custom-built fire truck, right? But in this case, right, uh, but looking at the the timeframes for delivery and looking at the fleet, the condition of our fleet today. Right, it's imperative, we cannot wait uh three years to to receive delivery of a new vehicle that would be custom-made. Uh, and more expensive as well. So, you know, by purchasing a off-the-line vehicle, we're probably saving anywhere between one fifty to two hundred thousand dollars.
I'm I'm gonna think about it like a car, right? If I bought it now and I'm just settling, are we settling or is this what something that is sufficient? Gonna work for the next, how long, fire engines last ten years or so?
Right, no, not at all, you're not settling and you're not getting anything less uh than you would otherwise. Uh, basically, what it comes down to is, uh, when you buy custom vehicles is you buy, you buy a fleet of vehicles. So you want every single one of them to be identical in nature. So that if a a driver operator jumps from one fire truck to another in another station, it everything's the same, right? Um, so in this case, uh, this is our one operating engine company that that you're gonna have in the city. So it, that particular detail, right, where we wanna have uh a continuity or, you know, uniformity in the vehicle. Is not a need uh today, but uh you get a vehicle that is fully compliant. Uh, with, you know, California law as well as the National Fire Protection Association requirements for what makes up a type-one fire truck. Which is the fire truck you see on the city streets, basically.
Any other question?
Um, Victor, with with us going in quicker than we had anticipated, is the funding set up that?
It still is, because we're still doing a ten-year fi- uh lease agreement. And we don't have to do the first payment until everything's covered. So right now, uh, depending on how the financing, the paperwork goes along, we're still looking at the first payment being a year away. So, uh, at worst-case scenario, we come back Q two, Q three to do an amendment. And just do a little bit, uh, yes, a couple of months earlier, uh, for the first payment. But right now, we're, there's no initial until we settle everything else.
Okay, no more question? Need a motion?
I'll make the motion.
I got a s- motion and a second vote, please. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mister Marita, find you. D two. Approve Expedienture Plan, Expedienture Plan and Resolu- uh Resolution Accepting the Twenty Twenty Three. State Citizens Option for Public Safety, COPS Allocation Funding by Chief Rio.
So again, good evening, Mayor and Council, um, this is a renewal of an existing grant that we get from the federal government for cops. And the equipment that we're looking to purchase is um associated with. Some traffic and safety enforcement, it's a department tool that has a public-facing component, will be able to answer questions about traffic control. We're gonna reintegrate um in-car video system, which we used to have, but it's has since gone away. All we have at this point is body cameras, so this is adding that 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 component back into the police cars. The absence of the LiDAR and radar enforcement equipment. And we're rean- reintroducing that to our patrol fleet as an enforcement tool. And then we're adding to our existing radio stock, which are fairly expensive. But we have additional reserves that we wanna put out in the field. And those are gonna help give, we have the ability to give the reserves, the additional radios. And then we have an express need for some cube computers for training, for the the LiDAR calibration. And the trailer, trailer, the radar trailer that is available through Starca that we're gonna be utilizing. And as a component with traffic enforcement, which is kind of the general theme. Um, traffic enforcement is always gonna be one of those quality-of-life concerns as a priority for any police department and any any city government. And these are tools and components being purchased via the grant that are gonna help us uh accomplish that.
Do you know why that stuff was phased out of the units?
I do not. I know at one point, they, the the backup office was, it reached end of life. And I don't recall which system the department had at the time, but it was no longer maintained past a given point. And they have yet to reintroduce them in the cars, I don't even know where they're at at this point. When I got here in sixteen, they weren't there.
All right.
Do I have to do two separate motions? I'll make a motion to. We can do one, I'll make a motion to approve both resolutions. Oh, res- uh, make a motion to adopt Resolution Number Twenty Twenty Five dash forty-four or forty-three and Adoption Resolution. Twenty Twenty Five dash forty-four.
Got a motion and a second vote, please.
Motion carries four zero.
Okay. Up next, D three. Approve and adopt the revised job description for building and code enforcement supervisor and replace the current job description. Presented by Kristen Smith.
Good evening. Um, so tonight we are requesting to update the Building Inspector and Code Enforcement Supervisor job description. Um, we do understand that we just did have this job description approved on June eighteenth. Uh, however, um, we are now in need of requesting to review and update the certification requirements. Um, right now, the current job description does require the International Code Council Residential and Commercial. Commercial certifications, both of them. Uh, and after the initial recruitment period, uh, we did not receive uh any applicants who met that requirement. Um, so in reviewing the job description, we did go back and take a look at other certifications that could uh be valuable to the city. To broaden that scope of um certification requirement with also incorporating the um requirement. That the two ICC certifications that the city was hoping to receive would be obtained within the first year of employment as a condition of that employment. Um, so there's no fiscal impact uh to this as um the position is fully funded for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. We just want to request to update the certification requirements, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
So with this change that we are asking for less requirements, is it changed the pay scale?
It does not pay, change the pay scale, um, and we're not really asking for less, we're just broadening the scope to um. Include additional certifications that are valuable for community development um and planning. Uh, with also the requirement to uh have those two that the city was initially hoping for uh within the year. So we didn't change the range, uh, because that is a a supervisory position and it would be um. It's aligned with our other supervisory positions as well.
But initially, we were asking for commercial, residential and uh, let me look at it here. Third one. But now, according to this, a possession of minimum of one certification license.
Right, with. Well, I think the initial was for the ICC two, the residential and the commercial building inspector. Um, and now we're asking for a minimum of one certification, which could be either one of those or a range of others. Um, and then requiring it as well down the line.
Was this included in our class and comp?
The initial job description was included in our class and comp, yes.
And so has this been reviewed through Gallagher?
Um, Gallagher is, once the class and comp um process was finished up. That we are not engaged with them further for future, it's up to us to update job descriptions as we feel is needed. Um, it's really, uh, if we were to engage and have them look at additional, it would be an additional cost to go outside the scope of the study.
So all these aren't going through class and comp?
No, they're going through um thorough review with the directors, um, and through HR and City Manager's Office.
All righty, any other question? I'll entertain a motion. I got a motion and second vote, please.
Motion carries three zero. I mean, three, I'm, I apologize, motion carries three one.
All right, up next, D four. Approve and adopt the revised job description for fleet and facility supervisor and replace the current job description.
I, yes, so the the fleet and facility supervisor uh position was recently vacated. Uh, whenever we have a position vacate, we do speak with the directors and we uh review the position. Scope of responsibilities and identify if there's any additional needs um to the job description before we recruit. And so with this one, it was identified that there was a. An opportunity to expand the duties and responsibilities to include safety and compliance responsibilities for city facilities and fleet. Um, and this would include ensuring that recommendations from our Workplace Violence Prevention Plan and Safety Committee are incorporated. Uh, and and conduct, through conducting regular inspections of facilities and fleet to ensure our safety compliance protocols are implemented. Um, the change would not uh result in a fiscal impact as the position is fully funded for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
All right, any question?
Just a real quick question, why are we not adding this stuff in the beginning?
So, um, the needs of the city are um evolving every day. And so when we have um person in the position and we hire for the job. Um, their their job description is in place, um, and we do review it as needed. Um, but when the person is in a position, it takes more to change a job description because it goes through labor. And it goes through um employee uh review, uh, along with director and city manager. When a position is vacant, um, there's less steps to update. And it's also a great opportunity for the city to determine what their current needs are and how we can appropriately recruit. For somebody who would best meet those needs. Um, so we always wanna look at a job description, we wanna update when we need to, so that we're um hiring the correct person for what we need.
All right, thank you, any other question? I entertain a motion.
Make the motion to approve.
A second.
And I got a second? Vote, please.
Motion carries three one.
All right, up next is D five. Authorized to delete one vacant full-time allocation and job classification for a project manager. And approve a budget amendment to add and fund one full-time community, me, community development project manager. By Kristen.
Um, so this, the project manager position with community development was recently vacated. Um, this was one that has gone through Gallagher, through the class and comp study, and while the position is vacant. Uh, we would like to update the job description to better reflect the current responsibilities and scope of the position. In order to accurately recruit a qualified pool of applicants. The uh project manager um was a range ninety-two and the community development project manager will remain at a range ninety-two. Uh, so therefore, there is no, um, the community development project manager will also be um, continue to be at an MSPC unrepresented exempt position. Um, so there's no fiscal impact for this change. Uh, again, it's, the position was fully funded as a project manager for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six. And so we would just be replacing that position with the Community Development Project Manager, um, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
All righty, thank you, any question? Seeing none? Entertain a motion? I got a motion? And a second? Vote, please.
Motion carries three one.
And should, should we specify for one, two, and three, or? Okay. I just didn't wanna have to come back. Thank you. Um, D six. Authorization to delete one vacant full-time allocation for police services officer. And approve a budget amended to add and fund one full-time allocation of animal control officer. Presented by Kristen Smith.
Uh, this position, uh, was recently vacated as well. Um, and also has gone through the Gallagher, uh, class and comp study, the animal control officer, uh, job description was recommended by them. Uh, and while the position is vacant, we would, um, like to update the position. Um, to accurately, accurately reflect the responsibilities of the position assigned to the police department animal control division. Um, this position would be moving from a police off, services officer one. Uh, allocated at a range sixty to an animal control officer allocated at range fifty-seven, um, to better fit the market. Um, it would be a non-exempt position represented under IPOA, Imperial Police Officers Association. Uh, we have spoken with the labor union regarding the change of, um, job description and range. Um, and they were in agreement as well. And so there would be a salary savings, um, based on the slightly lower range. Uh, at range fifty-seven, um, and resulting in a seven point five percent difference between ranges, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Alrighty, any question? And I'll entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I got a motion?
I'll second.
And a second?
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you very much.
Alright. And next, reports, department reports, Mr. Mora?
Um, a quick update, um, on the SR eighty-six verification project, so we completed the turn lanes. Um, north of very only, we're working on the south side. Um, we're gonna be working on that for the next two weeks. We also gonna be closing down Sixth Street between Imperial Avenue and SR eighty-six, we have works, work to do. Work on the medians, work on the, uh, little bit of a landscape, waterline and electrical service. So it's gonna close down the next week or the next two weeks. We also notified the school, I know there's no school, but. Uh, just in case, um, you know, they'll be notified and we also sent that to city manager's office and it will be posted on social media as well.
Are we doing anything about changing the striping or any kind of public notification of how those turn lanes and intersections are gonna work now? I've had it happen to me a couple times where I'm in a turn lane trying to make a left and someone has pulled into the median and they're telling me go around. And wait for, wait on the other side, but then that puts me in conflict with the turn lane coming the other direction.
We haven't completed the, the striping, um, right after we completed the south side of very only will, uh. We, well, we'll put the striping in, but I think it will be very beneficial if we post something on social media. Cause everyone's used to the old stuff, so yeah, I've seen that in other jurisdictions and they have been posting, uh, uh, how.
Need a little help to videos, like a little like.
Uh, yeah, it, it has been very beneficial with. Uh, we'll try to do our best, uh, post something then.
Make it fun. I will say, if you don't have the City of Imperial app, get it. If I find out all the road closures, I'm like, okay, I'm not gonna go that way. It does, it, put on your notifications. If I don't get a heads up beforehand, I'm like, oh, Ayton or Austin or.
And I did also notice, like, they brought in some excavators or they removing more dirt now in that phase, or?
It's part of the same phase of the south, yes, so they will be, they'll be bringing more equipment. Um, and that's the reason of the closure, so there's gonna be a lot of movement for the next two weeks, um, trying to get it all done as soon as possible.
Are we gonna be doing, talking about, you know, intersections and like that, are we gonna be doing anything with the area right there on threshold and eighty-six?
Not at the moment.
The median, where everybody's using it as a lane?
Oh, uh, no, there's, there's no plans.
In front of CHP, in front of the Dodge dealership?
Yeah, no.
Everybody's crossing in front of the welcome sign?
They're coming and going that way.
I think, Mr. Dale, we might just move the rocks and stretch them out.
Now, ready? Anything else, Mr. Dale?
Thank you. Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, our great staff has been super busy, um, re-striping some of the school zones. The crosswalks and painting red curbs, um, before school starts, keeping also the water running and the wastewater being treated. Um, doing a great job with that. Um, they're working on the old post office a little bit here and there, getting that started. And, um, we are working on getting our Title twenty-two report finished, finalized. Uh, to- Title twenty-two report is basically, uh, the report that tells us what we have to do to treat water to recycled standards. So we've had already a number of, of developers that are interested in that water that we might be able to sell in the future. So that report's coming, um, soon, and, uh. We are working on a potential project that, um, you might be interested in or not, but we'd, we'd, uh. Like to get the buy-in, but we're just started in, and that is the, uh, connecting fifteenth street. Yeah, um, there are some funds and circulation impact fees that, and it is identified as a project in that restricted fee. So we're looking at that as a potential, um, if we get all full buy-in from, uh, of course, city manager, council and everyone else, but. Uh, that's something that we're actually looking at, if, if we can do that, we could probably have that open for next year's school zone, so. That's, that's, uh, that's exciting and, and, um, I'm hoping, um. With some reservation, but I'm hoping that we might be able to find some money for another overlay, small overlay project this year if possible. Um, so we're looking at that as, as a potential and, uh, we'll go from there. And if you have any questions for public services, I'd be happy to answer anything right now.
I saw the stop sign in turn lane on fifteenth and La Brujerie, and La Brujerie, and I turned and it was a dead end.
Yeah, yeah, so it's, it's only nine hundred and ten feet to connect that, so it's not a long distance. And the, the, the big difference it would make in the traffic and diverting vehicles from the residential zone into the. You know, a thoroughfare would be, I think it'd be a great thing for the city.
You, there had been, I don't remember if it was Chief or someone here that mentioned that, that stretch of fifteenth from La Brujerie to C Street, that it turns out that that's county. If we extend it all the way down to where this, it's fifteenth of the city, what portion of that's county, what portion of it would be city?
So it's, from what I've seen, half of that is in the city and half of it's in the county up to C Street, and after C Street, it's all city. So, yeah, um, and, and I don't know if the county, but I've been, we've been talking to the county and they were gonna come in and. Um, put some no parking signs, I don't know if that happened yet and possibly restripe, so.
The restriping hasn't happened, I know that.
So that, that is in the, in the works, um, been talking to public works in the county, uh, about doing that. Yeah, cause there's, it's, ha- the south part is definitely county, but it depends on who you talk to, the GIS shows half. Is the city, in half, the north half is the, uh, the city and the south half is the county or something, so anyway. Yeah, so it's weird, all along that area and, and even on, uh, Nackle, there's some strange annexation stuff that happened. So, and Worthington's the same thing, you, you in city and then you're in county and then you're in city and you're in county. Well, you may have some contacts in the county, I'm not sure, you might.
So one contact, but, um, do they plan to do any, I know it's not, but it's county and it just seems like it meshes all together. Do they plan to do the striping on the Worthington there, area or?
So I can leave that to Mr. Lopez, I guess.
That section, yes, sidewalks we tried, uh, with the counties.
They put cones.
They put cones there.
Striping hasn't been done, but it will be.
Oh, people think it's like, one lane over here, two lanes over here, and then they just.
And, and then there's some small restriping that's gonna be done on Ayton. Um, public services, we did grind a little bit of the white line, uh, left turn, eastbound to northbound. That was a little bit off-centered, so that's gonna be, I think, restripe whenever they come out to, uh, finish the striping. Uh, on Ayton Boulevard and fix some of the bike path stuff, um, by Valori, so that's coming too.
Alrighty, Mr. Lopez?
So I knew one day that, uh, soon, that we were gonna punch through fifteen, so when we did the paving project at Fourteenth Street. We did some grading already on that side of the park, so that's good to hear that we're actually gonna get maybe in the potential sidewalks and things that can. Create some street parking instead of them parking on the, on the dirt. So that project has been fully paved. Uh, we were able to do some additional things, uh, with that same budget that the county provided us. Uh, in addition to the paving, we're going to have the budget to thermoplastic, which I hear is very expensive. Uh, so that parking lot will be a thermoplastic stripe parking lot, state-of-the-art only in Imperial, so.
Only quarter of a million.
Yes, uh, we didn't have that much money, but we were able to swing this one here, so. I'm excited to, once we get that complete, I'll get you guys on there, we'll do something officially to kinda open that up. Uh, the Redondo, uh, Sky Ranch Park expansion, uh, it's a big project there, uh. Uh, scheduled to be finished toward the end of this month. And, um, if you drive by there, I've seen, uh, Mayor Tucker and, uh, uh, drive by there a few, a few times and. Uh, they just finished building the gym equipment, shade structures are next, sidewalks adjacent, solar lighting. Uh, this thing's a pretty big expansion, so, um, I'm excited to do that groundbreaking, uh, or the ribbon cutting with you guys as well. Uh, along with the, uh, California Parks and Recreation Society, uh, marking that as a. Uh, they call it a national demonstration site, which is an all-inclusive, all-well-rounded location. Um, that's one of the ones, Eagle Park will be the next one we do here, uh, in this fiscal year, so, uh, that one's due for a big, uh, 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 re- re. Recreation, uh, parking, parks, uh, playgrounds looking a little sad, so, um, the last thing would be, uh, come out Friday night. Uh, you guys, as well as the public, anybody watching, uh, seven to ten at the Imperial Pool, we'll have tons of raffle prizes. Uh, donated generously, uh, using Dippy Duck and IID sponsorship money and others. Uh, IPOA, like you heard, uh, Officer Slyer mention, will be a part of that event this year. Uh, they'll be giving away some goodies, some free stuff as well to the public. Uh, our own Jeremy Schaefer will be also there, uh. Doing loaded potatoes and whatever he does, uh, so it's gonna be, if you guys attended last year, it was well-attended. Uh, we hope to see all y'all there, uh, Friday night.
Awesome, be there.
I have a question, I don't know if it falls under David or you or both, um, some of the receptacles and the planter boxes are a little. Gone.
Yeah, so I'm glad you brought that up, so we have, uh, if you saw the crews, they were kinda going over and thinning out the trees this week. Uh, part of the next weeks, uh, leading up, uh, towards the end of the month, we're gonna have, we already have the receptacles. Uh, we're gonna be swapping out those, the mosaics. Might not transfer, but if in the future we become, or we get some money or some, uh, uh, some grant money, we might be. We be able to refresh those with some artwork on them. They are flat-facing, they are exactly the same thing, other than they don't have the rainbird. Uh, 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 artwork on, on the, uh, but we will be replacing those in the next few weeks, uh, that are, those that are broken.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Estrada?
Um, Mr. Mayor and council members, uh, nothing to report, we have been very busy, but probably next, uh, meeting we can report a little more.
Alright, nice to see you're happy?
I'm happy.
Happy feller. Alright, Chief Row?
Yes, Mayor Council, um, again, with the cadets here, uh, we have a thousand reasons to be proud of the men and women. From the Imperial Police Department, the job that they do, but the cadets program is one of the ones that actually kinda speaks for itself. Because the result is you have a confident group of children and young adults that are willing to forego. Six days of their summer to spend with family or vacation, and to go into San Diego and get yelled at and. I'm not gonna use the word abuse, but I'm not doing it myself. And then another thing that we have, this is the first time I've ever even heard of it. We have a remote audit, so we're basically going to, we're being asked by DOJ to self-report all of our DOJ compliance. Which leads me to believe they may have bought a thermometer or have access to the weather channel. But, um, normally, normally when DOJ does an audit and, um, Councilmember Mendoza is probably familiar with this. They go through and they physically inspect the entirety of the station, and they, they check doorways, they check certain logbooks, they check accesses. They check the people that come and go through the building and make sure that they have all the requisite, um, certifications and testing. In order to, to go through the station, and this is the first year that I've, that, that we've been asked to do it ourselves. So I don't know if it's a trust thing, or if it's, they don't wanna come down here, but, uh. So, what's that?
They probably got dogged.
And, and it is August, you're correct, so, w- we're gonna be doing that over here in the next, the next couple of weeks and, and then completing that prior to the due date. But other than that, I have nothing else, I'll stand for questions.
Alright.
I'm really proud of the program, that's amazing, it's, it's really cool to see.
It, it's, it's highly popular at the schools too, and they, they, they kinda go hand in hand because they have a law enforcement program there. And they, they compete with other, uh, cadet groups in, in the academy up there, and they get to see how other organizations. Um, support and run theirs, and I think it's a good endorsement that they appreciate the support that we have for them here.
Alrighty, we'll have a conversation and see if we can get them out and present them into the community during the next big event.
Certainly, they, they actually participate in most of it.
Seen them?
Yeah. I was saying for the nine eleven stair climb, that all the different agencies bring their cadets out. Yeah, I'll, I'll bring that up. Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Fire?
Uh, good evening again, thank you Mayor Tucker for the opportunity to speak. Uh, on behalf of the fire, the fire department, I want, just wanna share with you guys that, uh, we have, uh, a total of two teams out. Uh, fighting fires across the state of California. Uh, fire season is definitely in full swing, I think this has been a really busy season so far. We have, uh, a team of four people in a type-three engine off-road capable vehicle at the Rosa Fire in Riverside County near Hammett. And also we have two team members, part of a type-six, uh, strike team with Calapat, uh, in the Big Bear area. Uh, at the Gold Fire in somewhere in Nardino County. Um, last but not least, piggy, uh, to be back on the police chief's, uh, comment about the heat. And DOJ not coming down, this week is, is a pretty hot week for us, so reminding the public, uh, to be careful, making sure that they don't leave, uh. Either pets or children in, in a vehicle in the heat, even if the vehicle is working perfectly fine and the air conditioner is on. Uh, malfunctions do occur and then tragedies happen. Dress cool, drink a lot of water and stay cool.
Alright, thank you very much.
Are the cooling centers still open?
Yes, uh, so the cooling centers are open, uh, the Imperial County Public Health Department has a page dedicated to that information. Uh, for the, the county fire department, the two cooling centers that we have open are in the township of Sealy as well as in Island.
And then the library's one as well.
Yes.
Alright, thank you. Mr. Menrique?
Uh, not much to report, uh, we're continuing to be, uh, completing the audit for twenty-four. Uh, supposed to be first draft by the end of the month, so hopefully, uh, we get caught up. Um, we still have the twenty-four, twenty-five fiscal year open up to the end of this month, so I'll be probably come back next month. To present how we closed out the year and new CAP budget. That's it.
Alright, thank you. Kristen, this is me.
Uh, so we have one new hire, uh, for this meeting. It is, um, somebody that you've seen before, uh, Jocelyn Torres. She started with this as a reserve for the police department, and she was just hired, um. On Monday as a police officer for the police department, so, uh, welcome to Jocelyn. Uh, and then also, uh, the nine eleven stair climb, um, the city will have a, a team representing, uh, at the nine eleven stair climb. We've had twenty-five employees sign up, um, and then I believe PD is also, and that's separate from council, so that's twenty-five just employees. Uh, and then we also have a, a waitlist going for the, uh, wait, and then we also have PD, I believe, um. Creating a team on their side as well, so we should have a nice showing of, uh, City of Imperial employees at the, at the event.
The chief's claiming?
If my schedule allows, yes. I don't wanna schedule this for school yet.
Thank you, Mayor, nothing to report this evening.
Can you report? Can you report on the, um, airport situation that we went to that meeting?
Um, yeah, we attended that, that meeting. Um, the, uh, contract for airline service is, uh, coming up next year, so they're starting to put together an RFP for, for that process, the county, uh, airport commission. Um, and they had a presentation and I'm drawing a blank on the name of the airlines. Um, there are two, they, they mainly operate out of LA and I believe Phoenix. Their service flies into the Hawthorne, um, terminal, their airport, but there, which is about fifteen minutes away from LAX. And then they shuttle you over to LAX if you need to fly out of there. So their rates seem to be a lot cheaper from what they've proposed so far. And there's, there's some, um, some definite, um, positives, you know, it's a sales pitch at this point, so, um, we'll wait and see who else, if any other, um, airlines bid on that contract.
Do, is they're going to, are they going to charge you for the shuttle or no?
Um, I don't believe so, I think that was all part of the, the service.
Part of the contract, that thing. And they were saying that they're much more re, reliable than the company that's currently doing it.
Yeah, that's the, the big issue with current service and, and.
Advance their LOC.
What was that, interesting and?
Yeah, it was a interesting, uh, presentation. They, they do seem to have a lot, again, it's, of course, uh, the center sales pitch at this point. But they really boast, uh, reliability and their customer service, um, you know, twenty-four hour hotlines and Spanish and English and, and, you know, staff on the ground that, that will take care of any problems that arise.
Then the only hub you would actually fly into is Phoenix.
Yeah, Phoenix or, or LA.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Marita?
Uh, nothing for me this evening, Mr. Mayor.
All right.
I have nothing to add tonight. Nothing for me, Ms. Marita. I attended a Friends of the Park meeting, our second meeting. I'm excited to see come to fruition again after being dark for a little bit there. Um, and then I'm excited for my planning commission appointee, I think she's going to do a really great job. She has a lot of knowledge and bandwidth and, um, Becky's great as well, but you know, we lost Becky to Raleigh, but that's okay. And then I want to, um, just comment that on Kristen, you had a lot of different changing around, but as you see, our city's growing and with that, HR grows, modifies, changes and it can't be an easy job, right, being the, the police, so to speak, of, of HR kind of thing. But I think, you know, trusting our, our, our directors here and our HR and, and allowing them to do what they need to do and kind of morph into what we need for the city, I appreciate all the hard work that you guys do with that. Um, your eyes and ears and boots on the ground, so to speak, and so you know what we need and what we don't need and what needs to change. And so I appreciate everybody's hard work and the time that goes into that.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Ampara?
No, just looking forward to Friday and I think I sent Mr. Lopez an email earlier today in regards to, he's looking for victims.
So yes, I appreciate your volunteering and, uh, I hear, uh, the echoes around the police department hallways that, uh, our own Sheffield will be another victim on that. I'll be excited to, to watch him.
Absolutely, I'm excited with all the construction that we have going around, all the, all the nice movement we got going. And like Ida says, our city is growing, we can see it, so thank you guys for all the hard work, much appreciated.
Okay, I attended the ICTC meeting, filling in for Mr. Amparano. And basically what David said earlier is about what, what they talked about and we voted. And then I intended the airport meeting with, um, talking to Mr. Garcia and that's about it. And with that, I'll adjourn the meeting till August twenty twenty five.